Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, I'm gonna call the common council meeting to order. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There he is. All right, Mary, would you please help us with the roll call?
Sure. Doug Saloga.
Here.
Jim Barron.
Here.
Jackie Valde.
Here.
Wayne Dean.
Here.
Matt Grimmer.
Here.
Phil Kason.
Here.
Tim Iker.
Here.
Mayor Kent Atwell.
Present.
Tom Hefner.
Here.
Okay, we have a special order of business first, the introduction of our new city clerk, Stephen Bratz Jr. Mayor appoints Stephen Bratz Jr. to the position of city clerk, subject to the confirmation of the council. So we'll have a... We need a motion on that, right?
We do.
And then we swear on that.
Yep.
Okay.
I move to appoint Stephen Bratz as city clerk.
I'll second.
Great. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Strong aye. Abstentions? Passes. All right, Stephen, come on up. Welcome to the city of Delphio.
Thank you.
What I'll be doing here is the official oath. So, state of Wisconsin, Waukesha County, I, Stephen Bratz Jr., having been appointed to the position of the city clerk, swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities, so help me, God. Great. Welcome. If you can stand over here for a picture. Maybe we'll just do this. Great, thanks. Your first day is Wednesday, right?
Correct.
All right, we got lots of work for you, Stephen. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number one, city of Delphio field citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens that would like to make comments? Come on up, Mary.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Daniel, and I live at 309 Wisconsin Avenue here in Delphio. This evening, I'd like to speak to item number six under new business, which is the referendum. On page two, at the top of that page, it says the city must balance the budget without relying on the reserve, its reserves, decrease expenses or increase tax revenue beyond the city tax limit. This problem should have more than two options to solve the situation. Poor prior proper planning has caused the city to be where it is. An example is, a capital project is way over budget. The Nagawicke Road path, solution, rebid it and make it under budget to ensure it is under budget, and offer $15,000 of DPW time to rub out the trees. This is a perfect example of poor proper planning. The lack of budget planning to maintain our capital projects for all of our departments defies logic, is not fiscally prudent. A referendum to raise the tax levy will not fix the operational deficit we have created. I'm curious, where is the capital projects budget for the citizens to review? I fear new capital projects will be approved because the city can now borrow at .85%. Borrow to borrow at a low rate does not balance the budget. The city has proven they do not plan for maintaining what they have added to the amenities that make Delphio Delphio. Citizens do not have the whole budget picture, and you have not done your due diligence in presenting this referendum. The second item that I'd like to talk about is report of city officials under B clerk, discussion and action of voucher list. The city has not published a treasures report since March of 2020, common council meeting, which was on January, which was for January 20, 2020, and has not published a capital project summary either. Are the capital projects that are approved on the budget, on budget? Example, St. John's Park repaved parking lot. That project is done, and there's no note of where it stands. The other question I have is the invoices from Magnum Assessment, short Elliott and Hendrix, which is SEH, and our attorney. Are they billed to the operating budget or the capital project budget? One thing that I'd liked, I pulled out of last year's budget workshop in three-ring binder, it is a flow chart of citizens at Delphio are at top. Next comes the mayor and the common council. Underneath that is the administrator and public works director. Off to the side is the assessor, attorney, engineer, inspector, judge, and planner. On the other side is the board and commissions and committees. So the next question I have for all of you is, how are we going to know more information about the referendum? Are there gonna be public forums? How is the word gonna get out there? So thank you for listening, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mary.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Come on up, Jerry. Welcome back.
Good evening. My name's Jerry McDeGul, and I live at 300 Fieldstone Road, Delphio. And I'm here, I'm part of, I'm a member of the police commission, and I'm here to address the idea that is going to come before the council later this evening, where the police commission should basically run the police department. And to give you my quick summary, I consider that a very sophomoric idea, and probably proposed by lack of management experience. If you look at the Board of Directors for the Police Department, or the commission, it's like a board of directors, and the police chief is like the CEO, and he's the one that runs it, and the board of directors or the police commission holds him responsible. Quite frankly, we have a very, we're lucky to have a very good and well-educated chief of police, and very well-run police department. I don't know if this is stemming from this defund the police, or some kind of a current action like that, but I'm here to say that the police commission is in no position to run the police department on a day-to-day basis, and it's a ridiculous idea. We can manage the police chief, but not the day-to-day operation, and I hope you all think hard about how a business should be run, and the police department is actually run as a business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other citizens like to make a comment? Come on up.
My name is Steve Rittenhouse. I live at 2520 Nagawicke Road, here in Heartland, Delphio. What I've provided to each of you is a three-comment suggestion that I have, and I'd like for you to think about it and consider it, and I do this in a positive spirit, so take it through the intended spirit that I give to you. But I call this the suggestions for the city of Delphio regarding budget development and strategic alignment. Point number one, the budgeting process should be a bottom-up method. Using a bottom-up budgeting approach, this may ensure that each individual department is getting enough funding for their operations. This kind of budgeting encourages department managers to think about their department goals. Bottom-up budgeting calculates budget estimates from the lowest level, which helps boost the accuracy and accountability of the budget. Department managers are more apt to be specific with resource allocation requirements, provide alternative courses of action, process or possess information about comparable departments, new efficient innovative products and/or marketplaces, and if they're open-minded, identify opportunities and address weaknesses. Point number two, consider the formation of a finance and administration oversight committee. The chairman would be one of the members of the common council. The city administrator is responsible for the implementation of governmental policies and initiatives established by the common council. The implementation of the council policies is accomplished through direct and indirect managerial oversight of all city operations and activities by the city administrator. The oversight committee may assist the administrator with staff performance reviews, evaluating the execution of policy, relations with council members, community citizen relations, and establishment of objectives. Point number three, set the priorities. Be strategic and critical. Get into the deep thinker mode, and establish the tone and vision for the upcoming year. As an example, a guiding theme may be to right-size and realign the overall structure of the city budget to best use taxpayer dollars wisely and allocate finances logically and clearly. Explore challenging issues with departmental managers and encourage their creativity. As an example of the critical examination, that may include a strategic review of all staffing levels, salaries, and benefits. I provided you with a chart down below, as well as the data in a table below that chart, so you can identify where these numbers came from. It were actually provided by Tom Hefner to Mary last Friday, so I have all of the individual salaries for everyone and in all of their departments. For the sake of anonymity, I excluded all names from this particular table. So the table states, the total compensation, which means I will take their salary, and I will add to that their benefits. The benefits can be health, dental, other types of things, such as the retirement plan, and other things to come up with total compensation. So if we took total compensation and divided it by their salaries, that ratio is 1.45. If the average total compensation divided by total salaries equaled the compensation survey, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, as well as other surveys that are out there regarding municipalities, and if that result is 1.33, which is what the survey says, then the total comp would need to be decreased or saved by $353,945 per year. Another example of the critical review is that the median city administrator salary, according to the surveys, is $85,000 per year. As you can see from the chart below, I've listed the individual departments and the number of individuals per head count, as well as the average staff salary for each of the individuals in that, in each of those departments. And as you can see, there is rather steep sliding curve, where we start with the Department of Public Works, the administration department, average salary was $174,000, average total compensation was an average of $174,487, sliding down to the police department with 16 individuals of $125,000 average total compensation, and sliding down to the Department of Public Works and the streets department, which has nine individuals of $94,000 total compensation, and so on, and so on. So what you see from this chart is, and what I'm saying, is be a little bit more strategic, or maybe you already are, so I apologize if you are, but take a look at other surveys that are out there, and see how do we compare to other individuals, to other municipalities, and are we overpaying individuals in terms of salary? Are the benefits too rich, or our total compensation is way out of line? Or number three, do we have just too many individuals, because we need to be strategic from a bottom-up approach, to take a look at the individuals within each of these departments? So again, this is my suggestion, we take it for what it's worth. It's intended to be positive, and if you have any questions later, please contact me, and I'm within happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, any other citizens' comments? Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Okay, we'll move on to item two, the consent agenda. Motion to approve the minutes, consent agenda?
Yeah, move to approve the minutes. That's consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, I'm gonna change the order up here a little bit, and we're gonna have the chamber come up, which I believe is 6A, to tell us about their events this year.
All the fun stuff first.
I'm Megan Bratz, I'm the executive director for the Delphio Chamber of Commerce, and I live at 2216 Patrick Lane in Waukesha.
I'm Dawn Gila, I'm the vice president of the chamber, and I live at W239 Majestic Court, Waukesha, 53188.
Okay, so we're asking tonight, assuming nothing's gonna change with COVID, we realize this is a fluid situation, but for approval to move forward for all of our events for the remainder of the 2020 year. So first, our first event is a brand-new event, it's a wine walk in Brewfest. We have approval from, on the event packet, so now we just need approval. This is a new event to bring people to the downtown area. It is an outdoor event that will bring in La Ducca wines, which, they live here in Delphio, but they're outfitted out of New Berlin, and it also gives opportunities to our businesses to participate in the event as well. There will be wine and beer tents set up similar to the art walk style in front of Great Harvest II candy. Safety precautions in place for this event. Each participant will have their own souvenir cups, so there'll be no exchanging of cups for the event. It's an outdoor event. All tents will be popular, or properly spaced out, and we'll be encouraging masks, and we'll also have hand sanitizer stations available as well. That event is on October 10th from 3 to 7. Anybody have questions about the event as a whole?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll be asking for approval to move forward with that event. Halloween in Delphio is a staple event that's been in Delphio for a long time. Given everything going on, we've decided to scale it back. Over the last few years, we've had music and beer tents, and this year, we're going to go back to what it originally was. We're offering business trick-or-treat from 5 to 7, and then the pumpkin illumination at dusk. We will be doing a survey of our membership and offering them a little pumpkin outside that says, we'll see you next year, or we're choosing to participate, so we're giving our businesses the option to participate or not. It is, again, an outdoor event, it's Halloween, so we'll be encouraging masks, of course, hand sanitizer available, and then the businesses will have the opportunity to opt in or opt out, and then we will control that by the illumination itself. We'll be cut short, we'll just be doing an overall lighting versus putting on a whole little show. The Ladies Night Out event is a series, it's the second Thursday in October, November, and December. We pass out bags, to which we'll be moving that to the front of a door, so nobody, there won't be indoor, but then overall, it gets people to come into the city of Delphio, shop and eat and dine. The chamber's part of this event essentially is just the coordination with all of the businesses and who is participating, and then we would recommend that our business owners do what's appropriate for their business, having masks worn inside, hand sanitizer, and just encouraging our businesses to follow the guidelines. And then lastly, our breakfast with reindeer event held down at the Fish Hatchery in December. That event, we will be going to a ticketed event, normally it's a four-hour event free to the public. This year, we're going to charge a very minimal amount of money, giving them allotted times to come to get their picture with the reindeer, just so that we can have a better handle and control on the crowds that come through. Typically, since I've been here for five years, in the forward span, we go through about 300 families, so still, even with doing a ticketed event, we would still probably be very close, but we just wanna be able to control the amount of people we have in line to properly social distance. We'll be encouraging masks, and then, like I said, doing a ticketed event to control the masses, and having hand sanitizer available. But those are events through 2020, all outdoor, and we feel confident with proper social media and talking to our community that we can host all of those events safely.
Great, if there are any questions for the applicant, otherwise, we're looking for a motion to...
I have a quick question. Oh, I'm sorry. For the reindeer event, you said you're gonna have tickets, so you're gonna have a schedule? I mean, are people gonna have times where they come back?
Yep, so we'll actually have a, it'll be a ticketed event, so you'll purchase a ticket within allotted time, so we'll have, let's say, 25 families per half hour.
Smart.
And then, so we can kind of, we will allow some tickets at the door based on what the line looks like, so sometimes, if you have an eight o'clock ticket, all 25 families can show up, but if they know they have a half, you know, so we'll go by that, but it'll just give us a better line control for this year.
Good idea.
Yeah, I think it's great. Following CDC guidelines, I think it's important to note, for the community and anyone listening, that Waukesha County did relax their gatherings, so you can have gatherings in excess, in excess of 250 people, so long as you're taking the proper precautions, as you mentioned. And I think that ticketing idea is reasonable and a good idea.
So I'm a supporter of it, too. It's interesting, I just came back from Colorado, we took our first vacation in eight or nine months. Their infection rate now is at 2% of their tests, so they're doing well. I am amazed at the communities, we went, we were Breckenridge and Frisco, where they had thousands of people participating in events like this, but the masks were on everyone, and the distancing and everything is strictly enforced. The stores had set limits, they had someone at the front monitoring in and out, and what impressed me is, I think if we all work together, we can have a lot of business and be safe.
Yeah, completely agree, absolutely.
But, you know, and I know we argue over whether there's laws or not, they have laws out there. It's spray painted on the block, on the sidewalks, signs, and there are areas designated where masks are required, and then there's others where, the primary business districts are closing streets, moving all the tables outside, separating, putting tents up of all these restaurants, they're serving all their food, they're serving alcohol, and they're making it work. And I was very impressed, and it kind of comes from both sides, from the business side and from the health side.
And I was in another part of the country, all through the south, and they're all masked up, and the same thing, going to businesses, people are outside, so I think what you have planned there is...
And we have this unique community that looks a lot like the ones I was visiting, that I think we can make it work. So, but I give you guys credit, it's a lot of work.
Lot of thought.
And I know in the end, a lot of businesses are just covering their costs.
Right. So do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will move to approve the events as listed for the chamber for the fall, for the remainder of 2020. Does that work?
Yep.
And I'll second it.
Excellent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes?
All right, we'll see you at ladies night.
Send us the info, so we can help publicize it with our new city clerk, who'll be running the website. No, you don't have to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna pull up 6B, the Delphio, yeah, the Delphio Lions Car Show.
Hi, Susie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street.
I'm Mike Dries, N8W31314, Salem Court, Delphio.
So we are here to get a rescheduled date for the car show that was rained out. It's very similar to what you saw before. One of the differences being, because it is later in the year, we expect we will have less cars, and because it is getting to be in fall. So the floor plan, as you will, or the map, is a little bit different. We, Mike and I went and walked the area that we presented to you, we looked at the distancing of the cars, reviewed other car shows that have been held. The plan is to have things, basically what you would approve before, except with a little bit smaller plan. There will be no food trucks, and there will be no, no outside vendors coming in. Everything will be local businesses supplying the food and drinks. Oh, and by the way, there are citizens that are helping, as well as the Lions Club. The Lions Club will still be having the auction, and has of next week, hopefully I'll be the first woman in the Lions.
Here, here.
Yeah, the last comment, too, is we will have the Delphio police on hand, so we hired them to be there for the event, as well as we handing out masks for every car. car, person coming in. And we've kind of changed the word, so that we don't have anything centralized. We're gonna be handing out ribbons on cars and then have them pick up awards separate, and pretty much, everything's spread out like we had originally planned.
Good. Are there any questions for the applicant? Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the car show.
I'll second it.
Great. Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
My comments are the same as the earlier discussion.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing the hard work.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we're gonna go to item 3A licenses. So A1, Discussion and Possible Action on the Application of a Temporary Class B Retailers' License for Delafield Chamber of Commerce for the Delafield Wine Walk and Brew Fest to be held on October 10th.
Who to approve?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, the...
People...
Yes, Jackie...
Tim and Matt.
Tim and Matt.
Aker and Grimmer.
Thank you.
Aker and Grimmer. Okay. Okay, 3A2, we're gonna skip because the Lions, the car show doesn't require a liquor license. And then we'll move on to 3B, Planning Commission.
Alright, well, first of all, the Plan Commission did have a meeting at the end of August. Might have been one of our shortest ever. It was 15 minutes, and it was mostly around some sign updates on that Oakwood Church on Highway 83, and a different roof on a building, a building with their very minor items. The one item we have here is just a follow-up from an earlier approval regarding a stormwater maintenance agreement for Kettle Court. So I'll make a motion to approve that. That was unanimously approved by the, recommended by the Plan Commission.
I'll second it.
Alright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
And that is it for Plan Commission. We have a meeting at the end of this month, as usual.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna switch it up just a little bit again, to make sure we're trying to get the people in our audience out here sooner than later. So I'm gonna jump to item 4, Unfinished Business. For A, Postponed from the July 20th, 2020 Common Council Agenda. Discussion and Possible Action is requested by Alderman Dean regarding optional powers for the Police Commission as provided for in the Wisconsin Statute 62.13 pertaining to more powers that can be given to the Police Commission in the day-to-day operation of the Police Department. Mr. Stocks and the chief, and whoever else would like to come up to the table, we'd appreciate Alright, Mr. Dean, you wanna start us off? You'd like them to go first?
Whatever, yeah. I don't know what they're...
I mean, could you, you asked to bring it to the council, so I'm just, we can go either way, but maybe they should hear what your ideas are.
I just asked that it be put on the agenda, because I didn't think anybody knew about the optional powers.
Well, I am interested in the subject, so I don't mind talking about it.
Yeah, what kind of optional powers are we talking about?
You know, quite frankly, to ask, it seems odd to be able to put something on the agenda
and be a, we can disagree without being disagreeable. I've been accused of being sophomoric and bush league, just to have something put on the agenda.
Not by us.
Well, it has been called. Just to let you guys know, that there is many, many municipalities that have exercised what's called optional powers. Optional powers give more control of the Police Department by the Police Commission. Optional powers, to have them granted, doesn't even need to come through this council. I just wanted people to be aware of it, that with 641 people signing the petition, it could be on, on the ballot for a referendum. I chose, I did not have to do anything nefariously towards you guys last time. I chose to ask to have it be tabled, because I didn't want it to go on this ballot in the fall, because we already had a referendum for the city referendum, and Arrowhead's got a referendum. So I didn't even know you guys were gonna speak last time, yet I was called out for being called bush league by asking for this to be tabled, of which I'll remind you, the motion was seconded and was approved unanimously. All I wanted to do was bring this to the attention, that we have this as an option to consider. So that's what transpired.
You know, I, from my understanding, it applies to some of the bigger cities. I just don't think it would be...
No, it doesn't apply to the bigger cities. I've got a list of all of the cities that have gone to optional powers, and they range from as little as 2,200 in Chateek, Hales Corners, 7,000 population, Ladysmith, 3,000 in population. There's plenty of cities that have gone to optional powers. There's the list.
My comment on this, and we had a comment earlier on the Finance Committee. I sat on the Finance Committee for a while, going back 30 years. I'm not a fan of creating additional boards. I think the Common Council should run the city. Well, then, there's special cases. Like, I was never a fan of the Lake Welfare Committee. Well, that, that thing has worked out pretty well, and so I was wrong, because I always figured this council could run the lake. But you do have people that want to have input, and they bring their expertise, and that's why we had a Finance Committee in the past. But then, it seemed that they were just rubber-stamping what the council decided to do anyway. And so, my general notion would be that there may be cities and communities that want their Police Commission to be running the department. My preference would be, my opinion is that the way we have it set up is just fine. I know the Police Commission helps in the hiring role, and if there's ever a disciplinary action, I know that that's a role they play. And I know that some of our members have probably been on it 20, 30 years, and, you know, they bring a lot of history. A lot of history, which brings some stability. It's not subject to turnover of Alderman or whatever. So that's worked out fine, but for them to actually run the department, I can understand why they might say no.
My question would be...
Brad, could you please speak into the mic, so people on TV can hear you?
My question would be, what does the city gain?
I don't think we would gain much.
For one thing, I can't believe that a commission is gonna do that on a volunteer basis without compensation, because you're involved in approving bills that come in, all sorts of little things that would require somebody being there on a day-to-day basis, or at least weekly. And currently, I don't know about the rest of the members, but currently, I've done it for almost 30 years without any compensation at all. So why do we want to complicate things, especially in a budgetary problem time?
I have a basic question. What's, what's proposed, or what, is this just an FYI? That, I mean, we could have done this with a memo, if it's just, I mean, the state statutes are littered with all sorts of things we can exercise as a municipality. It's rare that one just shows up on the, on the agenda for no reason. Is there, what's the base reason for it being put on the agenda, Wayne?
I just have to have it put on the agenda months ago for discussion, so that people will be aware it's an option.
Okay. Well, I guess it's done, right? I mean, what else are we doing?
There's no motion, right?
Doesn't, no, I mean, Mr. Alderman Dean asked to have it put on the agenda, and we're having a discussion about it, and...
He's interested in it. I'm happy he brought it up, so I will never pick on someone for bringing up whatever they want to talk about.
I will reiterate that, you know, I think, considering the fiscal situation we find ourselves in, we're gonna have to look at the mirror and see just how we got in this situation, and as was stated in citizen comments, you know, maybe look at things creatively. So, you know, this is a different possibility. I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, but I, thanks for bringing it forward. But, you know, at the same time, what it suggests doing is, you know, having, not side conversation, but having some additional information provided to us and not making it a much larger discussion this evening, because I think it's just not gonna serve us well. More information for me to look at individually, maybe discuss with one person to do some research, I think would be really quite advantageous, as opposed to continuing with a discussion now, unless there's anything else that somebody else cares to add to.
Anybody else? Alright, well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Thanks for bringing it up, Wayne. Alright, we will move on to 3C, Lake Welfare Committee. Phil?
Thank you. There's two things that have kind of been ongoing, that I think we probably will see something coming at us. The first one is, the city attorney has provided information to the Lake Welfare Committee. We've gotten complaints about additional boat slips being rented out on the lake, and that's actually against Wisconsin State Statute, so that's illegal, but that's also under DNR, so that cannot actually be regulated by the city at all. However, through Waukesha County ordinances, we may be able to actually regulate business transactions that go on, and therefore, in a backroads kind of way, effectively try to mitigate people renting out their boat slips. We have some people that are renting out as many as three, four boat slips, you know, at least making six, seven, $10,000 or more possibly. And as a result, the committee's gonna be looking at this and asking for additional advice from the city attorney about initial costs. The other thing we might wind up seeing more about, I really think we will, is we're the only community that looks at construction limitations along the lake in regard to looking at square footage of the actual building and nothing else. All of the communities have apparently switched to looking at impervious surfaces. As it is right now, in the City of Delafield, there would be nothing stopping somebody from paving their entire yard, as I, as it's been explained to me, which would cause a lot of runoff. All the other surrounding communities have limited it to 15 to 30% of impervious surfaces, so we need to switch that. So the, I think we'll be seeing something from that committee on that.
Great.
So could I make one comment?
Yep.
We used to have a livery license in the city.
I'm sorry, did you say livery?
Livery.
Okay.
And, 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 so the yacht club used to pay a fee and have a license for the number of boats that they had slips established for. Bob Beaver used to have that. He had about 30 slips. This is down on Milwaukee Street. And, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but I asked why it was no longer in the code, and they said, "Well, we really don't have any horses."
I'm sorry.
That was the answer. This is about 10, 15 years ago, because I noticed we no longer had, had the bill at the yacht club. And so I'm only bringing it up is because if that's really what it is, and it's probably a Latin term for, that was applied, but maybe we made a mistake, and it had to do with the ordinance revisions, when they were recodifying ordinances. So I think that's the opportunity to regulate that stuff.
Interesting. Yeah, I have no recollection of such an ordinance.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I know some of these individuals that, you know, are leasing extra space, and yes, the DNR does have a guideline on it, but they're not gonna get involved.
No, they're not. The reality of the situation is, even if we have an ordinance, we're gonna have, gonna have to try and prove, it would be our responsibility to prove that money is exchanged hands, where it's not a business. If it's just, they can claim it's a friend, so there's things the committee's gotta work through.
And that's, that was the way, it's always the way around it, but, I mean, we've, we've talked about the hotel tax applying to, to the private bed and breakfast, or not the, or rather, the vacation by owner situation.
Yeah.
So it's, it, I can hear it as a, with the value of use of the lake going up, it's an issue.
Yes.
Great, is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to 3D, Park and Recreation Commission. Mr. Grimmer?
I think our last meeting was the 24th of August. The Five-Year Planning Commission for Capital Improvements has been canceled. It is looking to be rescheduled. There was discussion on the St. John's Genesee Park, "grass" in quotations. I believe negotiations are continuing with the contractor regarding that ongoing dispute. The, the grass there really isn't grass. It's more like concrete and a few little...
Tom might be able to help you out with that.
Blades of grass. Have we made progress on that at all?
Yeah, we've reached an agreement with the contractor as far as the monetary agreement, and starting last week, Tuesday, our Public Works crews are in the process of redoing the grass restoration in the park.
And that was a settlement with the contractor?
Contractors, yep.
Okay.
So when you say DPW is doing that, was that part of the arrangement, that we wouldn't have paid them, or we get something back, and we will just take care of it? Is that it?
Right. We received over $4,500 back from them, and we took responsibility to perform the work.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Other than that, no further report. I'll refer you in a minute.
Great, thank you. Okay, 3E, Public Works Committee. Mr. Barron?
There was no meeting this month.
No meeting. Okay, 3F, Delahart. Mr. Iker?
Things are going well at Delahart. We have a meeting tomorrow night, and the plant upgrade is, is going as planned, and we're starting to work on our budget. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, 3G, Police Commission. Mr. Slogo, was there a meeting?
Yeah, there's a meeting on August 26th. Primary is a review meeting of the annual report that the, that the chief gal presented to the council. Several meetings passed, as well as other reports around internal affairs, complaints, ride-along requests, use of force reports throughout the past year, et cetera. There's also conversations about the upcoming referendum and potentially what are the ramifications either way? If it doesn't pass, staffing, conversation on the budget. There is no action that was presented or approved at the meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, 3H, Library Board. Ms. Valdi?
We had a meeting, and I have a couple of things to discuss. The children's department is now open for browsing. We're very happy to have our doors open, and even more excited to see our youngest visitors once again, the cute ones. The Delafield library now offers outdoor Wi-Fi that extends all throughout our garden, back parking lot and front parking spaces. We're hoping that this encourages patrons to use the beautiful garden and outdoor space even more. No password, just choose the outdoor network and agree to the terms of use, which is pretty cool. We'd like to thank the friends of the library and the Bridges Library System for helping to make this happen. We also have some pretty cool socially-distanced outdoor programs for kids this fall, including a storytime, an outdoor dance party, and Halloween scavenger hunt throughout Delafield. The scavenger hunt involves a lot of local businesses, including Genetti Gardens, Daybreak, Eye Candy, Clearwater Outdoor, Sally's Sweet Shop, Knitch, and Hawks Inn. We thank them for their help and participation with this program. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you for that update. The outdoor Wi-Fi sounds particularly good.
It's cool.
Okay, 3I, Zoning Board of Appeals. Phil?
No meeting, no minutes.
There we go. Okay, 3J, Promotion of Tourism. Jim?
I did miss a meeting. The minutes are attached. I know that the new members, or some of these new members of that commission are really looking closely at all the money they're spending, and especially with the tightness of this year's revenue.
Excellent. I've gotten good feedback from the chairman, that he's working well with the city administrator, and there's a good communication going on there. Okay, thank you very much. 3K, Lake Welfare, or Lake Country Fire Commission. There was a meeting on July 8th, but the minutes haven't been posted yet, so I reached out to the fire department, and they should be up on the website within the next couple of days. Okay. Okay, 3L, Lake Country Fire Board. Mr. Grimmer?
Two or three things to report. Revenue for July came in very positive, in line, exceeding budget. Training center revenue is over budget, which are both good, positive things. There is an uptick in labor expense that goes along with revenue, but all very reasonable. The second thing is following our merger with the seven municipalities. The fire leadership is participating in joint training with some of those municipalities on road recognition. So as we have folks, firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, traveling into different communities to answer calls, they can be familiar with those streets and little hard-to-find places. And then the last thing I'll bring up in response to the civil unrest in Kenosha earlier, several weeks ago, Lake Country and Fire and Rescue did send an ambulance there as part of a mutual aid. And so they handled everything really well and very professional and did a great job helping out with that unfortunate events down there. And that's all I have, I refer you to the minutes.
Great, thank you for the report. You're up again, Tree Board.
Tree Board. We had a meeting. I refer you to the minutes.
I read the minutes.
Yeah, what are you, I don't remember anything from them.
Well, there's some cool things that are in there. There's some planting that's going to happen.
Actually, I'll interrupt. I was late, I was late to that meeting, but Mary Daniel and I are going to go pick up some wildflower flowers, right? That's right, we got that plant, so I remember that. That was a deal.
At the Bleecker Street Boat Launch, which I've been whining about, so I appreciate very much and I'm happy to help do some grunt work on that one. And there was also talk about planting a shade tree. So there are a couple of things on there that stuck in my head and I just want to thank you because many hands, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jackie.
We also do have an action item from the Tree Board.
Oh my God.
And I'll take this one, Matt.
Thank you.
I passed out before the meeting a authorizing resolution that each of you should have before you. We were unable to have this prepared in time for the packet on Friday, but the city, we've identified a urban forestry grant that we would like to apply for. This is simply taking things that are in, that is in our everyday budget each and every year. Things like our crews pruning trees, our crews planting trees. Much of this stuff is funded by the Tree Fund and there's an opportunity to receive a grant of up to $25,000. And so this is a required resolution authorizing a person, in this case myself, the city administrator, to submit such an application and to sign on behalf of the city. And therefore, I would recommend passage of this resolution. The grant application is due by October 1st.
Do you need a motion?
We do.
I so moved.
I will second that.
Great, excellent idea.
I'm thrilled.
Excellent idea. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
For clarity's sake, it's, it's a matching grant, correct?
It is a matching grant, 50-50 matching grant with a maximum contribution from DNR of $25,000.
And which is money we've already spent, so they will...
Well, it's for 2021, so it's, it's money that would normally be in the 2021 budget.
Okay.
So if you want to do a project for 30 grand, you could do it for 15 and have a matching grant for 15.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think it's brilliant and well-spotted.
All righty. All opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, now we're on to 3N, Deer Management Committee. As you all know, I'm filling in there to try to provide some guidance to the committee. Just to reiterate, you know, we have Joe Brown and Jim Marsh who are new, brand-new members of that committee this year. I was able to recruit them to really do the hard work that the committee needs to do. And Joe is the analytical spreadsheet document type guy and Jim Marsh is the lifelong principled hunter and helps us with all the hunting sides of the, that the committee needs expertise in. And then we have the other committee members that are primarily representatives of either Park and Rec or Public Works. I'm forgetting the third. Third, third committee, it's not coming to me. So those guys are doing the vast majority of the work for this and I greatly appreciate them stepping forward. And then I'm more or less being the liaison to that committee. So the Deer Management Committee, item number one, discussion of possible action to approve the 2020-21 deer management plan report and authorize the landowners and bow hunting matching program for 2020-21 bow hunting season from September 12th, 2020 to January 3rd, 2021, as unanimously recommended by the Deer Management Committee at their August 19th, 2020 meeting. Looking for a motion to approve that.
I so move.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay? And two, discussion of possible action to approve the city of Delafield's bow hunting rules and regulations 2020, as unanimously recommended by the Deer Management Committee at their August 19, 2020 meeting.
I will so move.
Great.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay. Three, discussion of possible action to approve the application and forms for the 2020-21 bow hunting season.
Move to approve.
Second.
Great. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, item number four, discussion of possible action regarding an ordinance change to section 34-20 firearms, bows and arrows, crossbows, missiles and projectiles of the Admissible Code of the City of Delafield to allow limited turkey hunting with a firearm on lands within the city zoning, zoned agricultural.
I, I would like to discuss this a little bit.
Oh yeah, for sure, for sure, for sure. Okay, since, since I got the committee, can I start it off and then let you go next?
Yeah, sure.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so I just want to refer you to page 97 in your packet, which basically is showing a comparison between an existing part of the code, which basically says guns aren't allowed to be used in the city of Delafield, to just give you the short version, then there's a section of exceptions. So one of the existing exceptions is goose and duck hunting using shot only is permitted on Lake Nagawicca or undeveloped land, but not within 100 yards from any building devoted to human occupancy unless the person who owns the land on which the building is located provides express written permission to hunt within 100 yards of that building. So that exists today. So what's proposed is the highlighted area in yellow, which more or less just takes the word goose out and puts in the word turkey. And the reason this came to be is that it's my understanding from some hunters within the city of Delafield that this activity of goose hunting with shot only and agricultural land has been going on for many, many years. And it recently became apparent that we didn't have an ordinance that allowed that. So the, on the quest of the hunters that I've talked to, and this affects the agricultural land on the east side of the, of the city and, and the west as well, where I've heard the comments, I put together this ordinance and brought it to the deer committee. It's a deer committee, it's not an animal management committee, and it didn't even have to go to a committee, to be honest with you, it could have just come straight to the council, but I thought it was prudent to give it more visibility and to allow at least the, the best experts that I was aware of in the city with regard to this kind of hunting topic to get their input. And they generally thought it was a good idea. So that's why it's in here. And Mike, if you could please go to page 98. So I just want to show you over here, the areas that we're talking about allowing it would be green on the east side and then the green areas on the west side. So...
Are you talking dark green, light green, fringe green? There's lots of greens.
Yep, light green and dark green. One is A1, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, the other is A...
A1E.
A1E. So there's a slight difference between them, but for all my practical knowledge of being on those properties in the past, whether it's gales or, or Morris's, it's, you, you wouldn't know if you were on light green or dark green, I guess is what I would say. So that's the proposal, it's here for your discussion. You can choose to approve it, deny it. It's just brought for, for, as a request and your feedback.
Do we have a lot of hunting that...
Yeah, so there have been people there for many years that have been hunting turkeys with shot. And it wasn't until recently that it became aware that it really wasn't allowed in the city. So one of the property owners stopped allowing people he was giving permission to, to do it.
Turkeys aren't really a problem.
Well, they, yeah, they should kind of be, I own ag land and they, they do a lot of damage.
So are they shooting with the lead shot, which is problematic?
That seems to be another issue.
May I?
Yeah.
I think it's hypocritical for us to allow shooting of lead shot. We are in litigation with the Heartland Sportsman's Club and one of our main points was the amount of lead, and even if it's a little bit of lead, there are so many studies of animals, eagles, hawks ingesting the lead and creating problems for lead poisoning. So thus, the state, the state law is when shooting for turkey, you can use a number four shot, or if you go to steel, you go to a number two. And a number two steel shot can travel 162 yards and still pierce skin and could travel up to 400 yards. So in all this green area to allow shooting, just because in the past somebody did it illegally, to reward that behavior with passing a law to allow them to do it, I think for the benefit of one or two people is not to the benefit of the rest of the citizens. So I'm vehemently against allowing shotgun shooting in the city. We have an ordinance, if going back to the reasoning camp, if you're saying, "Well, we're doing it on Lake Nagawicca," again, that becomes because the, the land is one thing we own where the, where the lake is DNR-controlled. So the DNR had historical allowing of goose hunting on, because lake or water property is owned by the state, not the city specifically. So they've allowed goose hunting in those areas. And again, they have to use steel shot. So if we did this, which I'm still against, I should require, you should require steel shot, but remember, number two is about the size of buckshot and that's going to travel over 400 yards. So even putting a 100-yard restriction, I think puts many people in jeopardy. It just isn't worth it.
Would we have the authority to eliminate goose hunting on Nagawicca Lake?
Yeah, all you'd have to do is we're sending that ordinance that exists today.
I always thought it was some legacy thing from the...
Unless somebody wants to correct me, that's my understanding.
I thought there was DNR, something the DNR encouraged.
The waters of the state would be regulated by DNR, so if you're talking about from in Lake Nagawicca, that would be the DNR. If you're talking about from the shoreline above the high watermark, that would be the city. And also our current ordinance that allows goose and duck hunting not only says it's permitted on Lake Nagawicca, but also undeveloped land.
Right.
So I, I put the exact verbiage in there of what exists today, which is what Tom just repeated, you know, is, is what exists in the code today. So in the idea of possibly adding turkey to ag, we basically just copied it and more or less, I mean, obviously we took out the word lake, but that was, that was the concept.
Wayne, when you say that steel shot's required for goose and duck hunting, is that something that's required by the state?
It's federal law.
Federal law. And is that federal law for turkey hunting or no?
No. What the state law requires is that your shot has to be number four size or larger is what they're, because, you know, you want to penetrate the turkey. They don't want small shot like an eight that doesn't, only wounds it, so it's got to be a larger shot.
Yep.
So the state law is for lead shot or smaller or using a shot that is steel number two, which is the size of buckshot, if anybody's familiar with about, about six to eight of those go into a cartridge. And that's, so again, I just don't think it's worthwhile in the city for any reason.
Got that for the turkey part, I just have a question for you, Wayne, since you have some expertise here. Given how you see the wording of how the ordinance is written today for goose, it says...
Well, however the wording is written for geese, that still one, a hunter has to follow the, the federal law and use steel shot.
Okay, because I was, I would, my, my objective was just to see if you had any suggestions for improving that particular one, from what it might say today, in the sense that it, it basically says shot only. Is that, could we better word that for goose?
I don't have a comment on that.
I know a lot of, you know, environmental, I pheasant hunt, I turkey hunt, most time with bow for turkey, but most hunters are starting to use tungsten now, which is a much more environmental-friendly shot that does not have the range of steel, has the same impact as far as, you know, lethal killing on birds, but their, the shot profile is no more than, than steel, but it just doesn't have the toxicity that lead has.
No, I'm sorry, what, I'm not an expert.
That's tungsten, tungsten shot. So most, a lot of pheasant hunters and a lot, a lot of clubs now require tungsten versus lead because of the environment. But that's used for big game hunting as well, that people do not really use steel for big, big herd, big bird hunting like pheasant or turkey, they're using tungsten or lead. Most people are moving over to tungsten because of the environmental aspects, so we, if you consider, you could place something just like the DNR requires steel for, for duck, maybe upland hunting, you could require tungsten or some other environmental load and not steel.
Okay. Great, thanks for the information there. Maybe we can look at changing the, at least goose part to say steel or tungsten shot only as a possibility.
I do agree with Wayne's comments versus our disputes with the, the Sportsman's Club. I think we have to treat everyone the same.
Okay.
And so, you know, thank you for bringing it up.
Great.
I think it's critical and they, we would be called out on it and rightfully so.
I will say, I think we are an urbanizing area in that sense, that these are restrictions that if anything, they're going to increase rather than decrease, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the tungsten shot versus the steel, does that have the same...
Well, there's got to be some analysis of that.
Does it fly as far, so...
Like for, like for upland hunting, people don't use steel because of the distance, just like Wayne said. People are using tungsten because it's, it's, it's same shot profile as lead, but it doesn't have the toxicity that lead has.
So it's not going to fly 400 yards?
Right, 35, 40 yards typically is for a kill range.
Have you taken your hunter safety class lately? Tungsten can go up to 600 yards according to the DNR hunter safety classes. Now, that's under rare conditions, but it doesn't only travel 35 and then fall.
Oh, that's a kill range, I said. Typically it's 35 to 40 yards.
So kill range is usually, but how far will it travel? So, you know, just, so it's out there for everybody, TAB-K. That's what I teach every one of my students. Treat every gun as if it's loaded. Always aim the muzzle in a safe direction. Be aware of your target and what's beyond. That's the most important one here, what's beyond, even in some of these agriculture areas, shooting of a firearm has been eliminated for a reason and still should stay that way. So I move to deny this ordinance to change to allow steel, to allow shotgun for turkey.
I'll second.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Great, thanks for the discussion, everyone. Okay. Yes, Iker was the second.
Doug?
Slogan? Yep. Okay, let me get back to where we are here. That was, okay, N5, update, signed deer management nuisance permit. Looking for a motion to approve that.
I will so move.
I'll second.
Oh, there was only an update?
Yeah, this is kind of an FYI.
Just an FYI? Okay, didn't need a motion.
You needed a motion or not?
We do not, we do not, my mistake. Okay, we'll move on to item five, mayor's report. So I wanted to put this on the report, I just wanted to highlight it. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Intermunicipal Agreement Signing Ceremony on September 29th will be at 11:00 AM at the City of Delafield Station located at 115 Main Street. So the police chief has put a lot of hours, a couple of years into this. It benefits the City of Delafield from long-term savings of at least a million dollars over in our capital budget, tens of thousands of dollars in our operating budget. The increases we would have incurred as we, as we're being forced to transition from part-time to full-time. Firefighters is, is the, going to be reduced as to what the cost would be to the City of Delafield with this agreement. And it's not only a win for the City of Delafield and the existing partners, Neshoda and Shuniqua, but it, the same benefits are being extended to our new members. You know, Genesee and the Town of Del, Town of Delafield and so forth. So this is a really big day and I just wanted to highlight the, the real success that we, all citizens of Delafield and our neighboring communities are going to benefit from consolidating and being able to manage costs better, better across the board for all our communities.
Wonderful.
If you're able to attend, please do, it's going to be, we're going to set up three different fire trucks up in a row and each of the municipalities is going to be there with somebody to sign. And I'll, on top of it all, it'll be a, a nice photo op.
But it'll be taking a lot of space for all those people.
So just wanted to highlight that to everybody.
Kent, under new business, I know we've moved things around and can I ask that we address item six D as on David?
Okay, sure. Okay, six, oh, I'm sorry, did I?
The City of.
Oh, you're over there behind the pole. Sorry about that.
She's got a little one at home.
Okay, 6D, discussion and action to approve the resolution establishing the City of Delafield's library levy as required to obtain an exemption from the 2020 Waukesha County Library Tax Level for 2021 budget purposes. Jackie or Tom or?
Stephanie, you want to come up here so good with this? This is really a formality for the city, we do it every year. And we have our amazing director who has been sitting here patiently.
Name and address.
I can be loud even through a mask. Stephanie Ramirez, 3401 Summit, Waukesha, 5318. Um, yes, like Jackie said, we're here, I'm here every year, you know what I'm here for. The increase this year is smaller than last, it's only a 1.58% increase. I did not prepare any remarks, but I can take any questions you may have.
This is, this is just us agreeing to what the minimum library levy would be if you had a library or not, right?
Right, you got it.
Something we do every year.
Isn't it exempt City of Delafield residents from the county library tax?
Because we're matching, we're matching.
Yes.
Right, it actually saves us money, basically.
Weirdly, yes.
Yeah, weirdly.
I'll still move to establish a levy.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
All right.
Thank you. Stephanie, do you want to stay for the dental insurance discussion?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to stay for the dental insurance discussion, you want to, we're going to do it now.
Yep, we're going to go to 6G, discussion possible action to extend dental insurance coverage to part-time employees.
Yeah, so currently the City of Delafield provides health insurance on a prorated basis to all qualified employees, which includes full-time employees and regular part-time employees. For some reason, our handbook never extended that type of benefit coverage to regular part-time employees for dental insurance. And we've got a newer employee who approached me about whether, she's a, she's a part-time employee and nearly full-time, whether she could become eligible for dental insurance. Not in the current handbook, the answer's no. But she indicated that she would appreciate if the city would consider it. First of all, on a prorated basis, like the health insurance is done. And if the council wasn't agreeable to that due to budget circumstances and whatnot, if it could at least be provided to part-time employees where the part-time employee would be responsible for the full premium, she would still be interested in that opportunity. And just to give you an idea, as far as the city's general fund, there's one, only one employee that would, that would impact the general fund. And as far as that employee, it would cost a little less than $1,200 per year if the city contributed a prorated amount like they do with health insurance. And of that $1,200 per year, only $450 would come from the general fund and the remaining $722 would come from the three different utilities. The most significant impact that this would change would have, would affect the library, where they have five different employees that this would affect. And so this would impact the library if the City of Delafield decided to do a prorated contribution. It would affect them to the tune of about $6,500 per year. Stephanie took that to the library board and they indicated agreement that they would be willing to fund that out of the contribution that the city gives to them for the, for the budget. So it's, we're really talking about $450 impact to the general fund if the city wanted to do prorated dental insurance for part-time employee. But if not, at least consideration of extending dental insurance to part-time employees where they pay the full premium, at least that would be appreciated as well.
The approval on the part of the library board was unanimous, by the way, just so you know, they were very supportive of this.
And the $6,000 is if everybody takes the family portion and not the single portion. For currently, our contribution would be about half of that because they don't need that full coverage.
So I, my feeling is in light of the fiscal situation, I don't think we should support more than just having them have access at their cost. I know it's only $400, but this is where it starts. And until we resolve our problem, we can't be just adjusting these things. I'll make the argument it's a competitive thing, maybe someday some of these folks will go somewhere else and get it. But right now, I think if this one person was willing to pay for it, we can allow it.
Well, as it's being introduced, I think it's.
And I understand, but it, it just, it doesn't ring with what we're talking about in the last month or two.
Besides the library, are there other part-time people that could benefit from that?
One.
Just one.
Just one.
Seasonal, doesn't count?
Nope, you, you need to be, have enough hours in to qualify for the Wisconsin retirement system to be eligible.
Yeah, I think it's an error in the book and if others agree that that's the case, you know, I'm not going to argue, but I, we just have to look at everything this year, that's what people are telling us, that's what we're talking about. You made a long list, Wayne. And our 400 bucks is 400 bucks, but.
You mean Matt?
Matt, sorry.
One of the guys over there behind the mask. I think, yeah, I, I would, I would move to do the 400 bucks for one person. Mostly because these are the little things that make employees want to stay and it costs us more to replace folks than, than I think a lot of people believe, but, you know. That, so that's my feeling, it would be the right thing to do.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll move to extend the prorated $400 dental insurance to the one person.
Well.
Can we do it to change the language?
We said the one person who would also apply to the library, right?
Well, yeah, to, okay, then just to extend the dental benefit to part-time employees.
On a prorated basis?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Motion fails.
I, I would have moved to allow access to our program at the employee's cost, the part-time employee's cost.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
Thank you.
I'm back next year.
Okay, if I, my checks are correct, I believe we are down to 6C. Discussion and possible action regarding city Christmas party currently scheduled for Thursday, December 10th, 2020 at the Delafield Brew House. Tom, your ball.
Yeah, at the August council meeting, it was proposed that we at least consider canceling the 2021 Christmas party due to budget issues. So in light of those budget issues being present now and also the COVID situation, I thought it would be at least prudent to discuss the 2020 Christmas party. As far as budget issues, the party has traditionally costed the city just over $2,000 as far as providing the, the food and the soda at the party. And with regards to COVID, we should be within the county guidelines with respect to the half of the stated occupancy of the room that we utilize. So I'll also just mention, I'd talk more after writing my memo with the banquet coordinator at the brew house. And as far as how they do food preparation, they said that they would require people to wear masks as they approach the, the food table or the banquet table. They said that they'll have some of their employees dishing out some of the food so that everybody's not touching the utensils and that for other food items, there would be disposable tongs where you'd use them and literally throw the tongs in the garbage. And then she also indicated that if the city's not comfortable with the food aspect of the party, but just wants to get, get together for a social event, that the food could be eliminated altogether and it would just pay, the city would just pay, I think she said, a $75 room rental fee and, and we've traditionally paid for the soda from the bar, so those are the options.
And you said that traditionally 100, or in the agenda, traditionally 100 people show up?
Yeah, that's the total amount that have showed up and then they kind of come and go, so our peak is probably something less than that.
And with the current environment we're in, I would speculate that instead of 100 showing up, there would probably significantly less.
Yep.
I would just say if we're talking fiscal responsibility, we should save $2,000 and, and not do the party.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to cancel the Christmas party for 2020. Second.
Just one discussion I had now, was there, and maybe I didn't hear you say, but was there an option to have the party for just $75?
Yeah, that'd be no, no food, just a social gathering with a open bar. It would be $75 plus the cost of soda if the city continues to pay the cost of soda as we have in the past.
Just think of that, that's also an option you might want to consider.
Who is this all open to?
It is open to all city employees, elected officials and all the members of the different boards, committees, commissions and whatnot.
I, I support the motion, but I do want to make the comment so it isn't misinterpreted. I get a lot of value out of that event, talking to people that work for the city, that I normally don't talk to. So it's something of value, but I think this year I support the motion.
Yeah, I would agree.
I just think it's going to be easier to say, let's pass. Until, until the world gets better.
Yeah.
But there is value to that event and I hope it's reinstated when we can do it again.
Again, fiscally and safely. So there is a motion and a second.
Yep, motion and a second. Seeing no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, that brings us down to 6F, I believe. Discussion possible action regarding a resolution to approve an updated suburban critical incident team mutual aid agreement. Tom?
The police chief is here to speak to that.
Oh, okay. I'm glad I went out of order then.
Yeah, we got you back to the referendum too.
Yep.
This, the mutual aid agreement, there's nothing changed on that from previous agreements. It was a decision among the chiefs, which are the board of directors for the team, to update the commitment of each community. This was something we discussed earlier in the year and quite frankly slipped my mind until a couple of weeks ago when the email went out to the group of us asking us where we were at. So it's, it's, there's no different verbiage in the agreement. It just reasserts the community's commitment to being a member of that team.
I'll make a motion to support that.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Great, thank you, chief, I'm sorry, I would have brought you up sooner if I would have realized that. Okay, 6E, discussion possible action regarding draft 2020 tax levy limit referendum information. Tom?
Yeah, we did draft a proposed information statement to be distributed. I've asked the council to review that and provide their thoughts on that so that we can get it finalized and start looking at distributing that.
And how are we distributing it?
Well, right now, we've got, there's police officers interested in going door-to-door while they're off duty. We're also looking at the city's website, Facebook page. We would notify people on the notify me system that the information is available and provide a link to it.
Are we going to have any meetings here at City Hall?
I think we should.
I think we should.
Yep.
The one suggestion is, and I haven't looked it all over, I'm sure you need all this detail, but if folks are actually going to hand out something, you need something that's a little more concise.
Yeah, we are looking at.
Like a flyer.
And referring, referring to this that might be on a website easy to find.
Yep, so there was a concept sketch, it's right there, that our police chief came up with.
I like it, good timing, chief.
It'll be a one-page flyer. We've got a graphics person in the library that's going to provide some help to us. It might take us a week or two because of her regular work demands to be able to put something together, but that's what we're looking at. Kind of in the middle, what's the impact of the referendum with regards to impact to the taxpayer? And then in the four different quadrants, bullet pointing, kind of what would be the consequences or impact to each of the departments with a referendum that doesn't pass.
I, I think we definitely need to do that, Tom. And I like that organizational schema with the circle and then the, the four quadrants. I think one of the things that we're going to be asked is, it's implied that the city has been fiscally imprudent and, I mean, if you, I'm, I've only been on council for eight budgets, nine budgets. And it, it's anything but. I think people have really tried to trim and to bind efficiencies and that hasn't been brought to the fore because that's a piece that's missing and maybe it can be brought out at hearings or somehow in a schema so that like, here's what we've been doing. And, you know, and the other thing that I did with, I printed up your proposal flyer and I calculated what the, what we're actually asking citizens, taxpaying citizens, what it would cost them per month, depending on the value of your home. Because if you look at the whole thing, it's, it's small amounts. And it was interesting to me when we had our, our garbage pickup discussion and I had, to this day, I've had more calls about the garbage contract than anything. But what people talked about is how much they valued the service and how if we all pitched in, we could get this better service. And people were very willing to do that. Now, that's something that they perceived of value. And I think if we stress that here are the people who work for this community and when we say no to, I'm a poor school mom, so I'm in the low end of this, but I'm going to give 20 cents a day to. mire, so I'm in the low end of this, but I'm going to give 20 cents a day to make sure we keep the cops we have, I'm all over that, you know? Heck, yeah. And that people understand that there are shifts where the police officer, there's one on duty, when people know that. Are they really okay with that? So, it just questions that I think make it a little less too detailed. I mean, the details are essential, I understand that, but we also need to cut to the chase, like, how much is that a day? How much is that a month versus a year? And how often have we raised taxes? And I'm not a fan, I live on my school mire budget, which is very humble, and I don't get raises every year. In fact, I often don't get anything. And, you know, we choose our profession, I know that, and I'm happy with mine, I'm not whining even though I sound like I am. But I think it's important that we understand that we get what we pay for, and we have really amazing talented people working for this city, and we want to keep them. So, that's just my feel. So, I love the graphic, I think we want to communicate clearly with our taxpayers, and we are all taxpayers here. So, just make sure that we understand that it's not like, woo-hoo, I need to go to Las Vegas or somewhere to play.
If I can piggyback off that, Jackie, I concur that a one-page document that's more easily digested, a graphic, especially in today's day and age, is far better. But I also think, you know, if it is particularly on a website, linking it to the other document that has been put together for further details, I really think people will want to know that, so I think having both is good, but directing them to this one, getting them to this one first. I do think there's something major that's missing from all this documentation, and that would be, you know, what do we do in five years? Why would this be any different? Are we just going to ask again in five years because the situation isn't any different? I mean, how did we get here, and how are we going to get ourselves out? As a new one to the committee, I think this is, I don't see an option. I think we've got to do this, we're in a shortfall, we're in a financial sticky situation, but it's not sustainable as we are. So, I think we somehow need to convey why it will be different in three or five years.
That's a good point.
We should try to do that, but we may be back into the same spot.
You know, the only answer to what would change is if development, you know, occurs. We've got the Hendrix development approved, estimated value there of $25 million, which would bring the city.
$110,000 to the upper.
Over $110,000 per year. And then the other big one is the potential for a medical complex at CN94. But that's really what the city needs to get out of this problem, is some growth.
And we need to.
That's been the major problem. Our net new construction has been less than 1% for over half of the years in recent memory. When it is over 1%, it's 1.2, 1.3%, and it just doesn't keep up with inflation and cost increases.
Does it say that in the summary you gave? That our growth versus?
It does not, and.
Because I saw that as an omission that should be in the statement as.
This will get awfully long.
Well, there's a lot, I think you can get more facts and less words on a single sheet than the write-up that we were given. Like, there's, you know, one thing that I'd like to see as well is, that I've alluded to, is what our staffing levels are today versus 10 years ago. Because I don't believe that we've, I don't believe that we've added staff in numbers that equate to us not being able to fund them. You know what I mean? How many full-time people did we have at the police department 10 years ago? How many full-time people did we have in city admin and in public works? I mean, I'd like to see those numbers because I have a feeling that there, we might be plus one full-time employee across the board, total.
Yeah, public works, I did state in there, we haven't added a full-time employee since 2008. And I believe, right now, Eric, we're probably plus one police position compared to 2010.
But your consolidation of the city administrator into, and the public works director, that's a negative one. So, I have a, I'd like to just demonstrate very simply that the city has essentially, we're within one full-time employee of what we had 10 years ago.
Right, right.
We've got X number more employees, more roads to plow, we've got X number more citizens to protect, we've got a different landscape with different problems with, you know, the heroin opioid issues and other things going on. And the real issue isn't that the city's hiring and paying people too much, because that's, on this, we, you know, we've got a sheet of paper here that's kind of alludes to the fact, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, that our people are getting paid too much. But according to what it takes to hire an employee here, all the studies that we do on, anytime we are hiring someone, we get it from Oconomowoc, Heartland, all southeastern Wisconsin, and we're right in at about the median average for what our employees get paid here. So, it's really a matter of, this isn't us thinking that, well, you know, there's nothing we could do, we really kind of looked under a couple of butt bushels for some money, couldn't find it, so we have to raise your taxes. This is simply the fact that our growth has not supported cost of living increases for the employees we've always had. And that some funding formulas at the state have changed, in particular the hotel room tax, that has put us into a bind, and it's time to correct it. But I'd like to see in those four quadrants, current employees for each department, and employees level we had 10 years ago, and I think that'll help people understand that.
I think that's a really.
We're not bloated, we're not bloated, is really my point. That's my mini rant, but.
That's easy.
You know, I like the idea of a one-pager that shows the types of services that are on the line here, and how today's numbers compare with 10 years ago.
Just another comment, I sent out Tom's document to three or four business, fiscally conservative friends that I had and asked them to critique it. And one of the things, two things, one, they thought it seemed like a, like a school referendum and a lot of whining of woe is me, woe is me. I mean, I get it, I mean, it's important that we go through those details and things like that. But what they really wanted, they thought it would benefit the process was if we said, what have we tried to do to keep ourselves from being in this position? Right? What have we done over the last five years or three years or whatever? And, you know, Tom and I put together a list today of things that we've tried. And Jackie, you brought up one of them, the garbage service, right? We could have saved $160,000 in the operating budget if we didn't do up the drive, or made you pay if you wanted up the drive. And our citizens, in large numbers, came and told us, they do not want that. They want, you know, so that was a cost opportunity that we investigated, tried to do, ran it by the public, and they said, not going to do it. I mean, we don't want you to do that.
He worked so hard to find a good deal, and it was shot down.
And at the time, a lot of those residents that were opposed to cutting it stated, increase my taxes by the $50 that it takes, but don't take it away.
That's exactly the call, and that was exactly what they said. It was, please do not remove this service. And I think it is important to bear in mind that, to Tim's point, it was a great rant, it didn't sound ranty at all. But I think it's a really good point that, you know, we have not grown. The city is basically slightly smaller, we've combined positions, we've really worked hard to not be at the top and to find efficiencies, some of the funding formulas have changed. I mean, at some point, we need.
Something you guys might not necessarily be aware of, but, I mean, it's been done in the past, but it was just done in the last year. I mean, we re-quoted out all of the healthcare services to leave the state of Wisconsin and get prices from a third-party vendor, to try to see if there was an opportunity to reduce those costs. And unfortunately, based on the numbers that we had at the time and what they gave us, they couldn't save us any money, keeping the same level of benefits, comparing apples to apples. So, I mean, it's something we've tried, right? Obviously, one we were successful at was the fire department merger, right? I mean, that is absolutely saving us both capital and operating budget as we move forward. We, you know, I mean, on the growth side of it, you know, we saw benefits in changing our planner up and combining with SEH so we could be more consistent and be able to be more consistent with people that do want to develop properties in our city so that we can try to get to that number where we need to be in five years so we don't have to repeat this thing. I mean, that's something we're doing to try to improve that process. Just a couple of other ones, we, you know, the Hendrix building, you know, the city changed the CBD 1 zoning. To allow the building that could be in there, to give us the $110,000. Now, we're not going to see it until a year or two after it starts being built in our actual revenue, but that's.
But that'll be there in three, five, so that'll help.
It'll be there, you know, two, maybe three years roughly, by the time it's all said and done, assuming they get started. You know, we outsourced, we quoted all the weed harvesting business by a third-party on the lake, instead of having public works do it. Unfortunately, based on the numbers we had at the time, it really wasn't a cost savings, but we tried, right? We looked to outsource to third parties to try and save money. So, I don't know how we add this and get this into a one-pager, but maybe in our longer document, you know, what have we done to try to get?
A whole category, include what you just said.
Yeah, yeah.
To say it's not status quo, we're trying to do things.
Here's what we have done.
Yep.
Pardon me?
Just saying, here's what we have tried.
Here's what we have tried, here's what we expect to happen in the future and why it would be different. I think that needs to be explained.
I often get with my, I'll call them because that's what they are, tree hugger friends, you know, like, they want to preserve what makes Delafield, Delafield, and that is also something that needs to be considered. I mean, if we just do everything and not tend the trees and not have the, you know, the flowered plants around downtown, you know, it'll look tacky, but we'll save money. So, where are we and how do we want to present ourselves is another consideration.
Well, and I think Jim has also said in the past, you know, we don't want the kind of development that's going on in Oconomowoc, we can solve our problems pretty quickly if we could do that.
I don't want to.
Wanted slow physical growth.
Right.
Well, this is a result of slow physical growth.
Right.
And the council has implemented that over decades. You know, as I've said, sometimes I don't agree with it, but the reality is, I know when people show up here and ask us to scrutinize plans and create green space, all that, you know, unfortunately, the state law now kind of targets physical growth to help you out of your budget problems.
How does that tax rate in the military compare with other southeastern Wisconsin, Tom, you know?
Southeastern Wisconsin?
We're in the upper quarter.
There's a huge difference if you're comparing Waukesha County versus Milwaukee County.
Okay, right. My understanding, the show to, and maybe it's because of, the show to Delafield, I wasn't impressed with one of the lower ones.
Tim's accurate that we're in the upper quarter of Waukesha County.
Okay, okay. Have you included Ozaki County or, you know, some of the other surrounding counties?
I have not looked at Ozaki County or other counties. If there's something specific you'd like us to put together as far as an analysis, let me know.
And some of it you might ask for, and we did it three years ago or five years ago, and it's still relevant today, we could just pull it off the shelves, right? So, don't be afraid to ask.
Well, we'd want to use current tax rates.
Yeah, because I found some, a state document that includes all of the municipalities out of 2017, and that's what I was going off of, but obviously, I'm not including something there, so I'll have to, I'll get back to that.
We're high, and town of Delafield's low.
Town of Delafield's super low.
All towns are low.
Just for Waukesha County, that's how it looks.
By definition, towns provide a lower level of services than villages and cities. Just real quick, Jackie, when we talk about the long document and we got this chart on the front page, are you saying you'd like to see two new rows added, one per month and one per day for the cost, breaking it down like that?
Well, not necessarily, I just calculated it because I think it's an important point, you know, like, even, you know, if I'm living in an $800,000 home, it's all of $145, but that's, that's $12 a month. I mean, that's your, what, your HBO charge, you know, I mean, it's just, it's so tiny. And I think to connect it to maintaining our police force, maintaining what we have, the services we have at the level we have, which are not opulent, so it's not, you know, so, yeah, I don't know if, I'm not insisting it, it was just a suggestion, you know, like in my head, I go, what's that a day? You know, is it, is it a latte? Not even close. It might be a latte a month.
So, maybe to try to wrap this up, any other comments, if you could send them to Tom? And I guess I'd ask if I can get them, maybe two alderpeople to volunteer to meet with Tom and myself, so we can wrap up this document and have something to publish by the end of the week. I mean, absentee ballots are going out now, we're out of time, and if we have two people that are willing to give a couple of hours, I don't think it would be much more than that to help Tom finalize the document and get our stuff out there and start the notification and schedule the meetings, we've got to have a timeline that's like that.
The hardest for me would be time. I am in the classroom until after 3:00 every day.
I could help, I could help.
Would you be willing to help, Jim? Thank you. Anybody else interested?
I will give it a shot.
Okay.
I can try as well.
Well, we can't have more than two.
Okay, there you go, oh, we got one. Sorry. Just my time is not flexible.
Okay, sounds good. So, does that work for you, Tom?
It does, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, anything else on this topic, otherwise we're going to move on.
Thank you, it was very thoughtful.
Okay, I believe we're on item seven, correct me if I'm wrong, report to city officials, administrator.
Yeah, a couple of things just to update on, I did send an email out, but for public purposes, and this has been widely distributed, but Highway 83 is closed, it was supposed to close today, I don't know if that happened or not. It did not happen yet?
It did.
It did, okay. And that's closed for deck repairs by the DOT, scheduled to open back up on October 9th. Item number two is, we are, based on request from residents, we've never done this before, but for the Nagawicca Road Path Project, our city engineer is going to be putting out weekly updates at the end of every week, letting people know the progress of construction, what's going to be anticipated happening in the following week as far as driveway closures, things like that. So, Mike Court has done a nice job on that, and the most recent update is in your packet. And then lastly, some updates on budget items. First of all, on Friday, we did sell the fire truck at auction.
Woo!
It was, it wasn't looking very good Friday morning, it was at $17,000, and then a bidding war ensued, and it sold for $52,000.
Oh, yay!
Well, it's better than the $17,000.
The market price is gone.
Which is more, 17 or 52?
Absolutely, absolutely. Number two, we received some bad news last week, Thursday. If you look at the last seven years, our health insurance annually, on average, has actually gone down by more than 2% per year, each and every year. Includes one year where it went down about 12 or 13%. We received some bad news, this year they went up 10%. And as far as what that translates into, for the city employees in the general fund, that's about a $26,000 increase to where we thought we were. And then Lake Country Fire and Rescue, our contribution to them goes up by about $10,000. So, about a $36,000 hit compared to where we thought we were budget-wise. We did receive a little bit of good news with regards to state shared revenue estimates. Our estimates for what the state is going to be contributing this year, they're still on pace to actually slightly exceed what is budgeted by about $1,600 for this year. That's still subject to change, but we did receive confirmation that as of now, that November payment is on track to be slightly ahead of our budget. And also, we received our estimate for next year, which is about $1,300, higher than what we included in the budget. So, a little bit of good news there to offset a small amount of the health insurance hit that we took. But I'll keep you updated as further budget updates occur.
Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on. Clerk?
Move to approve the voucher lists.
Can I second that?
Can I second that?
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And C, council request for future agenda items. Are there any?
Can we, is it true that we haven't had a published treasurer's report since March?
I'm going to check on that.
Can we have one, make sure that's on the agenda next time?
Yes, I will work with the treasurer to make that a priority. And she's still getting up to speed on issues with the city, but that will be a priority.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none? Seeing no further business? We are now adjourned at 8:48.